Special meeting of the Ubrin School Committee. Meeting November 19th, 2025. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, members of the audience, could you please remain standing for a moment of silence? One of our educators passed away recently. Ms. Smith, may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, welcome to Ubrin School Committee. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded. When you speak to the committee, you are consenting to being recorded. Could the superintendent please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
President.
Ms. Chizel.
Yeah.
Ms. Cormier.
Here.
Mr. Lipson.
President.
Mr. Moran.
President.
Ms. Wetzel.
Present.
Ms. Crowley.
Present. All right, so moving on to the agenda, we have a very short agenda tonight. It's a special meeting. We have public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come and speak before the committee? Hello, Ms. Chizel, how are you doing tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
I just have to give you caution that the Ubrin School Committee has a three-minute time limit on public comment, and I think you heard what I said about consenting to be recorded.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Alex Chizel, five majority lane. I'm going to give you guys the weekly Malcolm White Playground Report. I'm just kidding. This will probably be the last time I come up here and thank everybody for it, but again, I just wanted to reiterate that the joy that it's bringing to the kids has been really incredible to watch. We were there over the weekend, and it was completely packed. It's been the topic of every kid conversation lately, and the impact it's made has been huge. In fact, I was in an IEP meeting for my son, and every single one of the providers told me that Jack had brought it up to each one of them on a daily basis from like the first day of school on, so, thank you. I wasn't able to speak on this last week, but I really wanted to specifically thank Lenny Burnham and the DPW crew for all the work they put into getting it up and running in such an incredibly short time. The passion for the project did not go unnoticed, and I hope they get a chance to see the finished product and the happiness that it's brought to so many kids. Next, I wanted to thank Student Services Administration for a really great presentation about Ubrin Special Ed programming at our CPAC meeting last night. The topic is super complex, but the presentation was incredibly well organized and informative. The feedback from parents in attendance has been extremely positive, and we look forward as a CPAC to hosting Student Services again at future meetings. Lastly, as the Malcolm White parent rep, in regards to redistricting decisions we have before us this year, I wanted to speak in favor of gray lines, or if no gray lines, not movement of components at all this year. When hearing the options in the current state of affairs in our schools, I tried really hard to zoom out and remember that this is all a piece in the long game of the redistrict plan. I think until we have a new space each year, it's going to be important, as Ms. Young has pointed out, to evaluate exactly where we're at at that moment and do our best to determine what level of need we're at and where that level of need is. So thinking about all the kids in the district and those that are to come, it's been important for me to ask myself, do the consequences of potential action outweigh the consequences of no action? So in this case, do the consequences that come with the disruption of moving children outweigh the consequences of leaving things how they are now or adding gray lines and reevaluating annually? So for me, I have not heard information that any school is in that sort of like red zone of overcrowding or is in imminent danger of entering that red zone area. So it feels that the changes we made last year, we're in a much better spot this year. So while this may not be the case one year from now, it feels that we have wiggle room when it comes to moving components. So if we choose to move components now, the Malcolm White will be near capacity with no option for pressure relief. We lose that wiggle room. So I just again want to reiterate that kids cannot be moved out of the Malcolm White until we have a space, a new school or a new space for the ECP. So if moving components this year is what needs to be done for the greater good of the district, let's do it. But once we pull that lever for the Malcolm White, it cannot be unpulled. So I urge the committee to be confident in that choice before we make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chizel. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come and speak before the committee? Hi, Ms. Friedman, how are you doing tonight?
Good morning, thanks. Good evening. Thank you so much, Bernice Friedman, Leonard Street resident. I want to thank this committee for voting unanimously last week in moving forward with the MSBA application process to build a new North Ubrin Elementary School. Your decision really helps to connect the dots why we did the redistricting last year and why we're back here tonight to discuss the best and hopefully least disruptive way to get to the end map. Of the three options you will be looking at tonight, I wish I could say let's just go ahead and plan to do nothing next year and the years to come, but that would be short sighted. Doing nothing is what we did and what led us to recent space issues. So during the recent parent advisory meetings on the redistricting, I learned that the number of pre-case students has not increased this year, which is actually what I predicted in line with post-pandemic baby boom, but I also learned that we're experiencing a drop in student enrollment this year. So these fluctuations in student population require us to think more proactively on how we manage our current buildings and classroom spaces pending the opening of a new elementary school. And this is why I'm speaking in favor of creating gray zones to give our school district the flexibility to manage the student population on a year-to-year basis. I would not support permanently moving any map component at this time because that would be more disruptive and likely irreversible. So please consider creating gray zones in between or along the borders of the school maps so families in these areas will receive the proper notification and communication moving forward should they need to consider another school that is relatively equidistant to their current school. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come and speak before the committee?
Hey, everyone, Rachel Cooberry. I live at Sixth Blake Street. I'm a Hurd Wyman parent and the Hurd Wyman rep on the Redistricting Advisory Group. So hopefully some of this information will be repetitive for the presentation that's forthcoming, but public comment is first, so that's what it is. But really, I just want to make a couple notes that Bernice already made of things that I learned at the Redistricting Advisory Group meetings that I think are really important to set the stage for when we're talking about the redistricting that year, and that's that our enrollment has decreased this year beyond what we expected with the shelters closing. ECP has not grown, it's plateaued. And our elementary schools with space problems are the Goodyear and the Reeves. The Hurd Wyman is in great shape. It's really different than it was the last couple of years, which is awesome. And what was shared at the Redistricting meetings is that the Goodyear and the Reeves principals felt that they could work with the space to keep the kids in place. None of the classrooms in these schools are close to capacity. The classrooms have space, they have open seats in the classrooms, but the schools are using all of the space in the classrooms. And then, and I'll speak about this in a minute too. The Kennedy Middle School continues to take on more students than the Joyce Middle School, so when you look at the projections for the next six years, that difference continues to be an average about 25% more kids will attend the Kennedy than the Joyce. And so with that, I ask that the solution that the school committee seeks for the current redistricting problem matches the magnitude of the problem. I didn't hear in our redistricting meetings that there were any critical needs. No parents came before the subcommittee or shared concerns about overcrowding and space. So we're in a much better place than we were last year. So like Alex and Bernice before me, I want to make sure that I voice my support for the flexible assignment or gray areas as this gives the district flexibility moving forward. Many communities around us have this already, Reading Arlington, Lexington, and I heard from even more from Ms. Crowley earlier today. And they have permanent gray areas. These are things they keep in place every year, not just when they're doing like a phased redistricting, which I think might be unique to us. So this is a normal thing that districts do, and it helps the district balance enrollment at two different schools, preventing opening bubble classrooms unless absolutely necessary. So this solution matches the magnitude of the problem that I'm seeing right now in Ubrin Public Schools and provides little disruption to the current children in those schools and components. So about the middle schools, as I mentioned, there is an imbalance between the Kennedy and the Joyce. You all said last year that you would address the middle schools this year, so I'm asking you to please do that. The middle school numbers are currently imbalanced and stay that way for at least the next six years, always imbalanced so that the Kennedy has more students than the Joyce. Looking just at incoming sixth graders, the discrepancy between the two schools varies, but averages out to be 25% of students. 25% more students will enter the Kennedy every year, yet the Kennedy actually has fewer general education classrooms. And the general education classrooms at the Kennedy have less square footage than those at the Joyce. So the classrooms are about 20% smaller, but we're going to put 25% more kids into them. And that information about square footage is from your feasibility study. And so it doesn't make sense to have the smaller classrooms. It doesn't make sense to have the imbalance at all, but it doesn't make sense to have that in the school with the smaller classrooms. And it doesn't align with your guiding principle of the redistrict for equitable class size. And so I'm asking you to please pay attention to the middle schools in this conversation, this presentation tonight, and in the coming meetings as we talk about redistricting. So I look forward to your discussion, both in the elementary and the middle school solutions. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come and speak before the committee? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'll move on with the agenda. We have two items, one big and one small.
Madam Chair, if I could make a motion to take the agenda out of order and hear from the other schools first?
Yeah, okay, so I have a motion to hear from the principals first before we discuss redistricting. And I have a second on that motion. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? No, saying none. Okay, so we will now take item B, elementary school improvement plans. Dr. Crowley, would you like to intro?
Sure. So we have six of the seven elementary principals with us tonight, so I don't know who's speaking when.
They have a plan. They clearly have a plan.
I know they have a plan. So it looks like Ms. Maloney and Mr. Gallo. Ms. Maloney from the Hurd Wyman and Mr. Gallo from the Alta Vesta are going to lead off.
Ms. Maloney, Ms. Gallo, I'm just going to, no, Mr. Gallo, I'm going to plug you into darkness for a moment here.
I just want to thank you and all the principals for being here tonight and presenting your school improvement plans.
I'm driving, so you're letting me lead. Sure. You can leave. You're in charge. Abyss. So could we have the first slide? Perfect, okay. We're going to be presenting our school improvement plans across the elementary schools today. You will notice that a lot of our goals are streamlined together across the building, but with tailored things that happen in our specific building. So one thing you'll notice overall is that all of the goals are aligned with the strategic plan, and the specific initiative that aligns with each goal is written right underneath that, right underneath that goal. So we're all moving in the same direction, working with the same goals that the district is using, and just kind of streamlined. The second thing that you'll notice in the action steps that we have in all of our goals are that they coincide with the instructional framework for the district with the overarching theme of firm goals and flexible means. And so that really comes into play with the next slide, which shows, hold on, the first goal. And the first goal is titled Tailored Reading Growth. And this goal, the purpose of this goal and where this came from is that it aligns with our Comprehensive Literacy Plan. We are in year five of the Comprehensive Literacy Plan this year with the overarching goal that we have all of our students in grades K through five, 80% of them reading at or above grade level. So we've made goals in the past few years where we would do increases of 5%, but what we realized is that after our partnership with, under Mrs. Young and her department and the curriculum department and working with Crafting Minds, is that we were making greater growth than 5%. So you'll see in the school improvement plans that different schools have different percentages. And we got at that by using our DIBELS early literacy screeners, and we have a beginning of the year benchmark that we use. After that, the teachers at grade levels meet with administration to kind of collaborate and decide what percentage makes the most sense per grade level at each school, depending on where they started. And then Mr. Gallo will talk a little bit about how we monitor that growth throughout the year.
Okay. All right, so I'm just going to take you through our structured data cycle where all schools conduct three benchmark data meetings, beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, as well as two progress monitoring meetings. During our beginning of the year meeting, we review all students' DIBELS scores. We compare the beginning of the year scores to last year's end-of-the-year data to identify any sort of regression or areas for improvement. We sort 100% of our students into instructional groups with aligned materials, assigned staff, and bi-weekly monitoring. From there, we have our progress monitoring meetings, which we just completed this week, and that would be our winter progress monitoring where we analyze students' three most recent DIBELS scores, or their data points really against their aim lines, which is their target, where they want to be. And then we adjust interventions if progress is insufficient or not enough, meaning we can adjust their intensity, their grouping, their materials. Then we assign responsibilities and we set next meeting dates so that we can move forward and communicate that to staff and parents as needed. Then we move to our middle-of-the-year data meetings where we conduct a comprehensive growth analysis. We review our intervention effectiveness. We identify those students not making progress or adequate progress, and we determine instructional shifts if that's necessary. And then we document our actionable next steps. And then for some students, we may have to, you know, plan student service team referrals if we have persistent needs. Then we repeat our progress monitoring meeting again in the spring, which would be the same thing that I just mentioned that we went through earlier, which is again analyzing their most recent DIBELS data points against their aim lines and adjusting interventions as necessary at the frequency, the grouping and the materials. And then finally, we move to our end-of-the-year data meeting where we celebrate student growth and achievement, we acknowledge challenges, we conduct program intervention effectiveness analysis, and then we document our findings. And then we share essential student information with next year's teachers so that we can ensure continuity of support. We'll identify school trends, and then that will help us inform instruction for next year and plan our professional development. And all of this is communicated three times per year. That's done through DIBELS parent reports, whole school updates, our school council meetings, and grade level staff reviews during benchmark and progress monitoring meetings. That's all I have. Done? All right, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any?
I apologize.
Apologize for that. Is there anyone from the committee that has questions for the principals at this point with the general oversight of that? No? Okay, thank you.
I have one.
Yes.
Just on the reading growth, when we talked about this at curriculum, they find a loss from June until September. And back in the olden days, when we had mandatory summer reading, I know that that's not something we really push a lot. Is that something we could encourage, not truly mandatory, but highly suggest kids read over the summer and keep up these skills? And even if it's something that we can finance some books or have the library come into play with us, I think that's part of it, kids get out of school in June and say, I'm not doing a thing until Labor Day. I think that if we just encourage that a lot more, I think it will help boost those scores a little bit.
Definitely. One thing that we have in DIBELS, like in M-class where it houses all of our DIBELS scores, is we have historical data and benchmark data per student. So you could look at someone and say like, okay, they left in June at or above grade level, and here they are in September, and we do see that dip. But we are cautious about that dip, and we're, we test. So it's like the second or third week in September that we're doing this. So if we know that a student left at grade level, we wouldn't necessarily place that student in like a strategic need group. We just know they need a little extra boost. But to your point, yeah, that summer reading is very important.
Yeah, I just think if we put a little bit more effort into that to encourage. I mean, I had a kid that was Labor Day weekend reading his book, but I mean, it just, and there's others that love to read all, you know, longer than we used to have discussion about some kids would say, I should read my Sports Illustrated, what I want to read since all school year, I'm told what I have to read. But I just think if we just encourage that somehow more, I think that would be helpful anyway. My two cents.
Ms. Wetzel.
Ms. Chizel made me think of something. The Ubrin Public Library does a summer reading program. I'm wondering, and I think we do this, do the librarians come into our schools at the end of the school year?
They do, in June.
Perfect. And then information sent home for families that then they can learn more about the program? I thought so, just making sure. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions, just on the general kind of data trends, DIBELS at this point? Was there plenty of more time to ask more questions?
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Thank you so much.
So it looks like the next two principals are Mr. Rob Nickerson, Malcolm White, and Ms. Meg Patrici from the Goodyear to talk about Goal Two, math curriculum implementation.
He being Johnny Carson, waiting for me to sit down.
Well, trying to be a little bit gentleman now and again. All right, good evening, everybody. All right, Ms. Patrici and I are going to discuss our second goal, and there are elements, simply because of the alignment that we have, there are elements of kind of overlap with what Ms. Maloney was talking about a moment ago, and Mr. Gallo was talking about a moment ago, so we'll try to move through and obviously take your questions at the end. I do want to point out the alignment with the strategic plan, and as Ms. Maloney pointed out, for the Goal Two, to incorporate routine collaboration time into the day and promote horizontal and vertical planning and instruction practices and data analysis, this has been a huge part of what we've done, certainly with the reading curriculum, but also now in the math curriculum. But it's something that, because of a lot of the trailblazing that took place prior with all of the ELA stuff, now with math, it's becoming kind of second nature, and it's really paying dividends a lot faster necessarily than the slower rollout that we've had over the past few years for that. So in terms of the evidence of progress that will include, excuse me, evidence that would be in all of this, evidence of progress, excuse me, will include shared instructional resources and documented adjustments to practice based on collaboration as well as walkthrough data to ensure utilization with fidelity of the goal of strengthening instructional practice and ensuring consistent high-quality math instruction. That's, you know, the crux of the goal right there. What we're talking about is making sure that everybody is communicating, that we're looking at what's being implemented, that we're seeing it in real time in the classrooms and ensuring that adjustments are taking place to make sure that this instruction is effective. And really, that kind of falls into what Ms. Patrici is going to talk about in just a second in terms of action steps.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. I'm going to talk about the action steps and how we're going to, you know, complete our goal. So for our action steps, we're obviously doing the reveal math. Their online platform is called Alex, and so we spent a lot of time implementing with fidelity the actual curriculum and also the online platform with the help of Amy Mainz, who has been a really a leader in the implementation of it. So with that, we've had, we started off a cohort of pilot teachers, and in each building, we had a couple pilot teachers at two different levels, whether it be K1, 2, or 3, 4, 5. Those teachers became teacher leaders last year and moved on to summer and created curriculum in slides to support the implementation. It's late at night. Implementation of our curriculum this year as we moved into September. With that, we did a comprehensive PD plan that started at the beginning of the school year, and actually we had one today for reveal math, all K12, I'm sorry, K5. And that was the help of Courtney Young was able to manage and organize that, and it was, it's quite an undertaking, anything K to 5. We also have monthly, we added in content specialists that support the implementation of the reveal and also Alec, and they have helped with supporting teachers as far as coming in and modeling lessons or supporting lesson planning. We've also added Alec adventures to kindergarten, and for ourselves as administrators, we've often walked through two to three times a week to make sure that that math curriculum, again, is being implemented with fidelity, making sure all the old curriculum is gone and we're developing new habits. We also monitor and adjust within the classroom. The actual platform creates kind of a tiered intervention similar to what DIBELS is, and it creates like a curriculum based on where the students are at now and how to push them forward, and making sure that is grade level and also, you know, the standards that Massachusetts standards.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
So, does anyone have any questions just on the elementary school-aligned principles around math curriculum at this point? Nope, just we have a new curriculum, so that's exciting. Thank you so much.
So I'm going to guess that it's Mr. Commoness from the Reeves and Mr. Casares from the Linscott Rumford to do Goal Three, Building Leadership to Drive Change and Growth.
Hello, gentlemen, nice to see you tonight.
Good evening.
So Principal Casares and I will be presenting Goal Three. Goal Three is focused on building leadership to drive change and growth through the creation of the instructional leadership teams in each school. These teams will meet twice a month using school-specific data to identify and manage shifting priorities to support students and the school community.
The instructional leadership team is made up of a diverse group at each school, so we have representatives from special education, multilingual learner staff, content and reading specialists, lead teachers for the humanities and math, as well as administrators. And I think what this does is allow us to look at the data from diverse perspectives and really kind of shape it through our lens of expertise. Another thing too is it allows us to be mindful of equity and any equity gaps that we make, recognize along the way, both roadblocks and examining some of the data, but also it gives us an opportunity to see what's working well in some pockets and how we can replicate those systems in areas where we are seeing successes.
And as you can see in the goal, the evidence of the ILT's success will be through the agendas, the meeting notes, as well as sharing data trends and shifts in the instructional practices with the staff throughout the year. And this is to support the high-quality instruction for student success. And the ILT will also regularly review the school improvement plan and the action steps needed to reach each school's goals.
And the overall process, I think, is designed to support the instructional priority of firm goals and flexible means. And in this case, our schools all have similar goals, but the paths we take might look a little bit different based on our school data. For example, at the Linscott, we may look deeper into math achievement levels for all students. Another area we're possibly looking at is the student growth percentiles, our student growth rate for our subgroups, particularly special education students and multilingual learners.
And for example, at the Reeves, we are focusing, we examined MCAS data as a team, and we were discovering that writing is an area that our school can focus on. So we are collecting data, we're meeting with teachers, and we're able to have the same goal of improving the school for the students in front of us as the Linscott and all the other elementary schools, but using the data of the students who are at our schools. That's our goal.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on Goal Three? No, okay, thank you so much. Very exciting. Now, it looks like Goal Four is broken into areas. So how are we all going to do this one?
I'll be going first for Goal Four. So Goal Four for the Reeves is our third year with the DESI Grant Program, Playful Learning Institute. For this year, as you may remember, our first year with the grant, we focused on learning the practices and having our staff kind of get to know what PLI is. Our second year was embedding PLI with the Ubrin curriculum and having staff become more comfortable with not following the practices, but more how to embed them. And this year, we have three goals that we're focusing on that we've talked to DESI about and we've agreed on. The first goal is we're going to take a mentorship role with two year-one districts of Revere and Lowell. So we'll be collaborating with their administrative team, and their first-year teachers will be collaborating with our first-year teachers. And that's going to start with a PD that's happening in the beginning of January in Worcester, where all districts are coming together for PLI. The second goal is to utilize peer observation to support our growth of the staff within our own building. So rather than focusing on embedding it in the curriculum, now we're going to use the support of our peers to help us grow. And lastly, it's to collect and analyze enjoyment and engagement data. And lastly, it's to collect and analyze enjoyment and engagement data to help support the benefits of PLI, but with data to support it. So far, PLI has gotten off to a great start. ECP through three are all involved. We were able to have two ECP classrooms, but then all of first, second, and third, and each grade level has a different goal, working with our PLI coach from Neighborhood Villages. For example, ECP in grade one are going to be presenting at that January PD in front of all the districts. We have our first and, our second and third grade are focusing on incorporating story acting into the writing curriculum, which also goes along with our ILT, the current focus for the Reeves, and our grade, what's left, kindergarten, is creating a resource hub for kindergarten, year-one district-wide, sorry, statewide for districts who are doing it. So every grade level has their own goal for PLI that they've already started this year.
Okay. Does anyone, any questions from Mr. Commoninets about PLI? Okay.
So just a quick one.
Ms. Wetzel?
How much, how long do we have the grant for, like, how many more years?
So every year, we don't know if the grant is going to be continued.
Okay.
So we always have clues and hints, and people say it's going to come, and then we last minute find out and we apply right away. I don't know if there's going to be year four, in the sense that the resources that they're using, they want to put for more year ones, so we may continue the practices next year without a grant to support it, but for the success and the data that we're hoping to collect, it might be something we continue on our own.
Got it.
I hope we do.
Great. Do we have any thought of maybe sharing it with some of the other elementary schools to try, like, I mean, I know we have a grant and the resources are currently at the Reeves, but I'm not sure if there's any way we can...
So the grant states that ECP has to be a part of it. So in that sense, I think the Shamrock is the only other school that could be a part of it, unless we talk to DESI and we can figure something out, but I'm also not the professional on that end, but...
Understood, thank you.
Any more questions on that?
I just wanted to share, Mr. Commoninets, I did send the video that was made by the John Gilfoyle PR company to the school committee over the weekend, so they were able to see it, and I think your teachers did a great job on that video. It's evident that they're excited about the PLI and your support, so thank you for that. I know you've also had visitors come to the Reeves from different places. Can you talk a little bit about who's come over the years?
Sure. So DESI has, you know, brought visitors to us as a school that has implemented ECP through three, and we're close to Boston, so anybody who flies in can drive to us. We had Las Vegas, Nevada come to us last year, as they have their own PLI version going on, and they wanted to see what PLI looked like in the classrooms, so they came to us, and they went to a couple of the other districts as well. And there was another, there was California also came to visit. So, yeah, we're open to share what we've learned.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's, I know the Reeves is a very busy school, so I appreciate your leadership in taking on this grant and utilizing it for the benefit of our students.
If I could plug one more fish just then?
Yes, please plug.
The teachers do it all.
Yeah.
Mrs. Kelly and myself, we are lucky to watch them, but they are the ones taking it on, and they're doing a great job.
That's awesome, thank you so much. All right, so now, looks like the Good Year has a goal of belonging. I'm looking at Mr. Casares, some of that's so old-school.
I'll stay.
Yeah, sure.
I'll start off then. So the three of us have a similar goal. It's a sense of belonging within our school. Each of us have our own little taste, but we have a couple of commonalities. I can speak to one of our commonalities, is, I think we've named it all a little bit differently, but a student council. What is yours name, Kenny?
Student Review Team.
Student Review Team. We have a student kindness council.
Student Health.
Student Council. At Good Year, we focused this year, our data point was our beginning-of-the-year data, and we surveyed the entire school of students and the entire school of staff to find out what their sense of belonging was in school, how they felt in school. I decided to just focus on one specific question, and really, the question was, I don't want to evade them, was, "I feel a sense of belonging and support," and that was in my classroom. And we sent out a survey, had pictures, depending on the age level, picture of each of their teacher, we collected that data, and we did the same thing to staff. And then from there, we had other things that we implemented. We had a couple things, like, we had students that trying to get the sense of belonging from outside and bringing it into our school, so having them, parents in their newsletter send pictures in, so we had them displayed in our classroom to make sure that they know that, you know, what's important outside is also important inside, and that we wanted to see them as humans, and we did the same thing to our staff, so our staff would send in pictures of their dogs, depending on the focus. Right now, we're focusing on character traits, so we'll go back to that in a little bit. We also had wraparound meetings, which we're trying to, I worked with Ms. Colkins, who also helped me run the Student Kindness Council, and we focus on making sure that students' needs are met outside of school and then also inside. We have a lot of things that are data academics, this is more of a human side of it. We did a lot, we did a DESI survey, it's another commonality, and then we focus on getting staff more engaged in our community. We have a great community, it's, I was lucky to come in, and the focus was kindness starts with me, and so now we focus on teachers being more involved in the school, so we have volunteer committees, and each teacher has volunteered to be on two committees, whether it's spirit, culture, staff, spirit, just to make sure that people, when they come there, they're happy, because I truly think if it's happy teachers, happy kids, happy kids, happy teachers. And we also put more people involved in the PTO meetings as far as staff, so they sign up monthly for that as well.
Yeah, so one thing to add on to that in Hurle Wyman specifically, is that we are working on continuing to build community in our building and focusing on cultivating empathy and fostering an inclusive environment. So we have the Rise Two program at Hurle Wyman, so a lot of our school adjustment counselor monthly lessons in the classroom are around how to be accepting of differences, whether differences in background, differences in, you know, neurodiversity, and just making sure that students are understanding each other and kind of building perspective. The second thing that we did at Hurle Wyman that has been off to a great start so far is that we are combining family nights with our PTO and school council meetings to try to get more people in the door and more people involved in some of the decision-making and some of the things that go on in our school community. So in October, we had a top-secret science night, we had childcare available, we had parents all meeting for the PTO meeting, and then as a big group, we went downstairs to the cafeteria and did a bunch of science experiments. And then the first week of December, we're doing a pizza and game night, so it'd be free family pizza and games downstairs in the caf, and then students will go upstairs and create some of the decorations for our holiday workshop that we have, while the parents stay downstairs and do the school council meeting and PTO meeting. And again, that's just to, you know, try to get more people involved in what's happening in our school, and sometimes it is just that, the roadblock of, you know, what do I do with the kids while I'm at a PTO meeting, and how much more you can get done when you have a meeting in person versus virtual, so all of that stuff put together to try to help our community more engaged.
And our goal goes back to, I guess, the beginning of the year, Dr. Crowley invited Secretary Todd Wyler to address the Woburn Public School staff, and he shared a message about belonging and acceptance, and given the redistricting process and kids joining the Linscott School this year, we thought it was just appropriate to have a goal around belonging and acceptance. So similar to the Hurle Wyman, our goal was really focused around more family involvement in different aspects of the school, around PTO meetings and having more like event nights. The Linscott PTO already hosts two very successful community nights. We do a ice cream social in the fall and a pizza bingo in the spring, so we're looking forward to supplementing that with a literacy night tied into our book fair, where parents and kids can come and visit the book fair together, get books, maybe some summer reading books with Mrs. Chisum, and really, really do it together instead of making it just a school-based book fair week. And the other one is a multicultural night, which we're looking towards planning as well. So we tie that in along with our character traits. A focus of us this year has been welcoming new students into the school. We just had some start this week, and really trying to make a welcoming first impression, making sure that school staff is responsive to new families, and then I think just the last part is just really enriching like the school experience for every student, have them happy to be in school, doing things, whether it be events with the families or the work that they do in school, where they're really enjoying it, making stronger connections with their friends and their teachers, and just really enriching their whole overall experience.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the three Goal Fours for these three schools? Yes, Ms. Wetzel?
Just a quick one, I'm curious as to how you either have or will sort of select students and form the student councils, various schools.
I can start. We, we had Connor's Kindness Project come in, so our student council was focused on kindness, and so the Connor's Kindness had a challenge, and they had to complete the challenge, not that, it was nothing heavy lifting, and those that passed in their challenge at the end of the week were automatically in on to it. And then we hand-selected with our school adjustment counselor, our social workers, students that really could be pulled in, and we could use it as a tool to bring them up, so, but we're always building every week, because there's always some kids that need to jump in.
Ours is more based right now on staffing, and I think we haven't had a student council in the past, so we're looking at building that and selecting students this year to go forward with it.
And our student council has been up and running since we opened Hurle Wyman and has a representative from third, fourth, and fifth grade. As each classroom, the older kids, the fifth graders, also represent the kindergarten, first, and second grade classrooms, so they focus on the monthly character traits that we have across the district, and really help promote those by making posters around the school, they present it to the class that they represent, and then they do, they're in charge of, like, right now, we have a food drive for the Council of Social Concerns, so they're in charge of that, and counting up the items and promoting that, sometimes they do a morning announcement, things like that.
Thank you.
Are you going to run, Andrew?
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Yes, Mr. Malren?
If I could just to comment for all the principals as well, the, the family nights and PTO meetings and whatnot, obviously, you can always reach out to the high school for some Yes Awards, Yes Hours, get those students to come by, just help supervise, I guess you'd call it, if need be, it's an opportunity for them to maybe come back to their old school and, you know, enjoy the festivities and still be part of the group, so just remember that the Yes Awards at the high school are always available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malren. Anyone else? I just had a quick question. Is the DESA competencies a screening tool for objective data?
Yep, it was just implemented, we do it last week, it was due by the 14th, yeah.
The teachers are completely advanced, so it aligns with the Castle competencies, the Bible competencies, and social emotional learning, and so that's kind of like the measurable part here.
Right, right.
We focus in on, you know, social awareness, self-awareness, and so measure for us to gauge, you know, how connected students feel to their classmates and to their school.
Right, because if you look at this, it would be hard to measure that, but you actually have a way to look at objective data.
Right, yeah.
I think Mr. Commoninets said that he's collecting enjoyment data. Anyways, so that's great. All right, moving on, no one else, any other, that didn't prompt any more questions? Okay. All right, so, looks like we have Altavesta, Shamrock, and Malcolm White. Thank you very much, principals. See you soon. All right. Hello again.
All right, so I'm going to speak a little bit that's applicable to all three of the schools, and Mr. Gallo will chime in, as the Altavesta and the Shamrock are even more similar than the Malcolm White is with either of those. So all three schools have a 21st Century Learning Grant provided by the Department of, well, provided by the DESI here in Massachusetts. The Learning Grant is in place at all three schools to provide after-school and summer enrichment opportunities. All of our schools have about, well, have two hours of service provided after school, at least Monday through Thursday, I guess, I'll defer to you as...
Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday across all three, all three schools for this. The funding is in place to provide assistance with things like homework, any sort of school skills, there's a focus on, or you can have a focus on any sort of academics, whether it be math or ELA-focused, it could be science, it could be anything. At Malcolm White, we shift it up a little bit, we look for student need, number one, in order to see exactly, you know, to target that need and target the services provided, but we also like to inject something fun and keep it interesting for the kids. Typically, we bring in some sort of a science curricula of some kind, and we give them some opportunity there. Over the summer, we brought in both a, trying to think of the name of it, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on it, but it's a sports activity thing, we bring them in, they coach them up on kind of how to play, almost like recess practice kind of a thing, as well as...
Playworks.
Playworks, I believe it was, as well as a kids' test kitchen, so they come in and they show you how to, they call it cooking, really, it's kind of safely cutting up salad or something like that, there's no heat involved. So it's a pretty good opportunity for the kids. Oh, and the last thing that I wanted to mention before I turn it over to Mr. Gallo is, the data that we collect on this is through a tool called the SEO, which is the Survey of Academic Youth Outcomes. SEOs are conducted by school day teaching staff, by the program staff, and also by students in fourth and fifth grade at the elementary level. So we get data from three different perspectives, the, the data from the professionals, whether it's the school day or the program, which in my case actually overlaps quite often, to be honest with you, we can then kind of see if it lines up appropriately, or if there's a big gap in it, and then it's also very interesting to see the student data that's provided by this and how they're reporting their experience in the program.
Yeah, there's really not much more I can add to that, other than it's an enrichment program that's run by the Boys and Girls Club, and our students are recommended by their teachers, so they really try to choose students who would really benefit from working with the adults in that program. Other than that, everything that Rob mentioned is, holds true for us as well, no difference.
I'll point out that at Malcolm White, myself and the staff actually operate the program in conjunction with support from the Boys and Girls Club, but at Altavesta and Shamrock, the Boys and Girls Club runs it from top to bottom, with support of the school day staff.
Any questions for these principals on the after-school programming and things of that nature? Anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
So now we're going to look at the individual school improvement plans, right? Or... I'm sorry? Oh, it is all written? Oh, okay.
We just have to have a motion to accept them here.
Oh, all right.
Motion to accept these school improvement plans from all of our elementary schools.
Second, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So what we heard was basically a summary of everything that was in those school improvement plans, I see, okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the agenda, we have a presentation from administration on the status of the redistricting, the phased redistricting, and the choices and deliberations ahead of the committee, which our final vote will be on December 17th, and tonight, we're just hearing information from administration on the vote ahead of us.
That's right. So, Ms. Young will really guide us through the redistricting update, but yes, there's no vote tonight, this is information, and an opportunity for the committee as a whole to hear what's happened thus far this fall, to see different enrollment numbers, and to be able to ask any questions that you might have.
All righty. In your packets, you have the presentation, and then you also have, just for reference of what I'll be referring to, you'll have the phased redistricting process implementation plan, which I'll reference, you have the middle school enrollment numbers for the past next six years, which I do think we referenced the last time, but you have a copy of those, and then when we discuss grade zones, buffer zones, you'll have to determine a name, you have examples from three other districts... have examples from three other districts, and what their policies and in registration process looks like as point of reference, but I'll refer to those as we go through. So this is the same presentation that has gone through the redistricting advisory committee, and I aim to keep everything the same, so most of you've probably heard this beginning to end, but from this meeting, after the review of the options, we go back to the Resource and Capital Planning Subcommittee, so any kind of unresolved questions that we have, we'll go back to Ms. Wetzel and myself in that subcommittee, and we can bring back throughout the process of need. So last May, the school committee voted for an end map redistrict, which is scenario six end map, which you have here, and then in that process, there was the determination for a phased redistrict, in which we did the phase three map, which is the map that is our current map, which is right there in the middle. What the link is there for those accessing the slide deck is the story maps, so that families in the community, if you want to look up an address, you can see exactly where you fall, not only in the phased map, but where you fall on the end map. As part of this, recognizing that the end map was determined that once we were to have a new school, so knowing that there are some components that are easier to move than others right now, recognizing that the ultimate goal was for us to meet our guiding principles for an end map. And so that is really when we're looking and thinking of the considerations that we have ahead of us, is that everything is moving towards the end space, knowing that when we made decisions, that we wanted to have kind of an end place to go to. So the phased redistrict process, or first I'll talk about, the components that moved last year that we had in the phased three, in the phased process, was M14, which is Dr. Ryan's favorite component, which is the pond, the Horn Pond area, and the reason that we note that that moved is although the students didn't move, that component moving is what connects the end map six with the south end eventually moving towards the Reeves, and so recognizing that the purpose of kind of that was to be foreshadowing the connection between the two zones. H11 moved from the Hurlwyman to the Malcolm White. L4, Linscott, moved from the Linsket to the AltaVesta. G8 moved from the Goodyear to the AltaVesta, however, please remember that that was the component that had a lot of grandfathered in, because we've made the commitment that when we, anybody who's been redistricted, that we will not redistrict somebody twice. So if we end up in a space where there is the need for that, we will grandfather students into their existing building, and G8 had a large number of that. And then A4 was our first opportunity to really try this kind of gray or buffer zone, which is one of the things we'll talk more about, and that is a component that is shared between the Linsket and the AltaVesta. And one of the things that we've talked a lot about through our caregiver and our redistricting advisory group is how much we used that buffer zone in order to provide equitable distribution, even for this upcoming school year. So we were able to have, we had what would have, in another year, had we not had that space, we probably would have ended up with a third kindergarten classroom at the AltaVesta and very small kindergarten classrooms at the Linsket. And so we were able to, within, just starting within that buffer zone, enroll students from their starting space to certain buildings to allow for equitable distribution. And so it was a good opportunity for us to see kind of how it works and how we're able to use it. And so I'm going to go off of the slide deck for a second and just refer to the implementation plan, and one of the things that we've talked a lot about through the redistricting process has been about establishing a process in which we are looking at our maps, our enrollment, and kind of the overall distribution of our zoning for schools as a yearly process, so that at times, we'll go through a process and not need to do anything, or it provides us for the kind of yearly look and a determination to possibly do something. And so one of the things we've talked a lot about in our advisory group, and I'll also kind of in this space too, is that we're really looking for feedback on how the process is going, recognizing that I think some of what happened to us in the past few years has been that there was no map maintenance for a very long time, and so this is an opportunity for us to set up a system and structure that can exist beyond us. And so just to go through kind of what this looks like, is that in August through October, we really look at our data review, which will go through enrollment, building utilization, special education programs, multilingual program, kind of program needs. November and December is when we begin to have our meetings with our different groups, our Resource Capital Planning Subcommittee, our redistricting committee, and this is when we build out our proposal to bring to the committee. And ultimately, what we're looking at tonight is our three different options, and then making the decision on which option. We will then be using January, February for implementation, and so recognizing if we're talking about buffer zones, for example, we might decide that's the direction we want to go on the December 17 vote, but we'll then go through the implementation of if we need a policy, if we need to do map changes, all of that will happen after. So we're really right now just focused on kind of the decision we want to go with, and then we'll spend more time in the subcommittee doing the work for the implementation through January. And there is an April 1 notification to families, so that gives us three months after the decision. The hope, oh, sorry, the hope with the decision, feel free to jump in. I feel like I've done this a few times, I'm also more nervous, I'm going to forget things, so please, if I forget something, jump on in. But ultimately, I think what we've recognized is that, one, the reason for doing the timeline how we have, although it's been very, at times, a little tight, kind of getting all the information up, is that, one, families are able to know the decision sooner. It also gives us more time on the implementation end, because what's happened before is we'd make a decision and then be implementing in the short period of time, and what really we need to do is make the decision in a shorter period of time and have more time to be spending in ensuring that our implementation from transportation to kind of family notifications, staffing models, and also you'll have that decision for your budget planning, so we'll know more about staffing and all those decisions. And so really, that was the ultimate goal of this timeline. So, and then also just a reminder, one of the things that came up in our community feedback sessions last year was getting feedback on our process, and so that will be set out to go around in January to the whole community, that we can also use to continue to fine-tune what we're working on. All right. So the goal of our parent advisory group was to be determining the pros and cons of the elementary options. As part of looking at the elementary, we also examined middle school, that we can provide for you, again, pros and cons of options, and then feedback on possible next steps. So I will be providing the same update that was provided to the advisory group, and then also share with you for your information on the pros and cons that were through that mixed stakeholder group as well. So first, we're looking at our enrollment for September of 2025, recognizing, of course, that we know that we have a fluid, fluctuating enrollment, but ultimately, and it was shared earlier, the best we can do is make the decisions with the information that we have in front of us and plan from there. So as you can see, our enrollment has declined from June, from our June 2025 data to our September, with a reduction of around 50 students. Our guiding principles, just as a reminder, again, our end map is the map that against the rubric is where we really did the best that we could, and knowing that our phased map would not always meet our guiding principles as well, but recognizing that these were how the decisions were made. And so for the elementary schools, making sure I'm going to the right space, great. The three different options that we are looking at, and this is really, again, building out into the process that we're going through, and I said this with the redistricting advisory committee, is that sometimes we look at options that we may never decide to do, but ultimately, the goal of the process is that we're kind of going through and saying, let's make sure we're doing our due diligence and considering what are the possible options, what do they look like? Some might have a lot more cons than pros, but not, but making sure that we're not kind of predetermining what it should be, that we're looking at all three options that we have. So the first option is a continued phased approach by moving more components for the 2026, 2027 school year, recognizing that we know our end goal six map is the map that we're working towards, that we have some options of ways that we could continue that movement to more towards our end lines, and then looking at, again, our utilization of our buildings, that of course, as we know, with our movement last year, while we absolutely made things much better, we know that we did not, you know, again, especially in some of our buildings, create all of the space that we needed, and so really kind of weighing that option. And so option one we'll look at is moving components. It's also helpful, because when we look at the moved components, is that also helps when we then look at option two, which is just consideration of more of those gray zones, similar to the A4, is that when we're looking for which zones might be good buffer zones, it's helpful to see what were the components we would have potentially moved for alleviating, because then it foreshadows what makes sense that we might consider for buffer zones as well. And then the last option, of course, is to make no adjustments and to evaluate through our next cycle next fall. So in terms of building utilization, through our redistricting advisory committee, we went through all of the buildings, and then really talked about, and what's presented here, are the two buildings that we continue to recognize are at our highest utilization at the time. Right now, the Goodyear is the building that we have our kind of most utilization, potential crowding spaces, knowing that when we did our final redistrict, that based off of the needs of the programs that are in the Goodyear, that when the Goodyear is at an 18-classroom school, we are then using and doubling up with all of our kind of adult staffing space. So with the Goodyear, it's not a student space, it is really an adult space, and that's because when our buildings are built, they weren't necessarily built for all of the staffing that goes with the programs inside, that we have all the space for our art and our music and our classrooms, but that our staff themselves, from the principal and assistant principal who share their single office space, to all of our special education staff in one room, occupational therapists combined in rooms, that really it's like an adult space problem. And so that's why the end lines in map six for the Goodyear, we are, we're looking at really a building that we're going to be kind of always trying to keep a little bit under 18, at like that 16 mark. A 12 would be too small, but they really would be best in functionality a little bit lighter. And then at the Reeves, we recognize, and this is, and Dr. Ryan will talk a little bit more about space within ECP and all of that, but we know that with the Reeves, that if, as we are, as we're looking at the number of general education classrooms alongside the preschool, that we are really at kind of every classroom in use. Some of our classrooms are kind of have less, are less desirable, for example, one of our classrooms does not have a window, as well as they also have a very kind of staffer tight, very similar to the Goodyear, that this is really more of a staff tight capacity, as well as they do not really have room to grow, recognizing if we had to add an additional ECP at this point, which, again, Dr. Ryan will talk about kind of where we are with that, is that we would have certain kind of contingency plans, which would involve us taking out, again, some of our adult spaces and having to do more shared offices. So I will pass it over to you.
Sure. So with the special education programs, the Reeves has two rooms that are utilized for the PALS program. The Shamrock currently has five classrooms for RISE 1. This is, it becomes a little bit challenging, because the Shamrock is only a two-section school, so it does present some challenges with respect to integrating the students in, when you have five program classrooms that are integrating into a two-section school. The Hurlwyman has three RISE 2 classrooms, and we have the overflow additional two RISE 2 classrooms also at the Shamrock. The Goodyear has four gain rooms. The AltaVesta has three SOAR rooms, and it has a kindergarten and a first-grade classroom that are co-taught. That actually works very well, because it doesn't take up additional physical classroom space. The Linsket houses the assessment center, and we do not currently have a language-based program that is separate in the elementary schools, but that is something that we are looking at implementing in the future and would probably look towards the Malcolm White. Our early childhood program, we have one ECP PALS classroom, these are on medically fragile students, they're at the Reeves. We have, and that is actually ideal, because they stay at the Reeves for kindergarten K through five in the PALS program. We have six integrated classrooms, which are special education students and typically developing peers. These six classrooms will feed to all of the different elementary schools. We have one RISE 1 classroom held at the Reeves that currently feeds to the Shamrock, where the K5 RISE 1 program is. We have one RISE 2 classroom at the Reeves, which currently feeds to the Shamrock, because the RISE 2 overflow for both kindergarten and grade one is held at the Shamrock. The way it is presently at grade two, it then transitions over to the Hurlwyman for RISE 2. We have two early childhood program, ECP RISE 1 classrooms at the Shamrock, and those students stay at the Shamrock for kindergarten. And we have two ECP RISE 2 classrooms at the Shamrock, which, again, are presently feeding to the Shamrock, which is where the RISE 2 kindergarten is held. So those are your early childhood programs.
Do you want to talk about ECP enrollment and anticipation?
Sure. The ECP enrollment seems to be fairly steady at this point, and we are seeing the same numbers, very similar to what we had last year. So at this time, we are, and, you know, ECP is very difficult to predict, because you don't know, it's, I think about it a little bit similar to kindergarten, where you really don't know who's going to register. It's sort of the two buckets where you can have surprises, and, but from what we can see, the data appears very similar to last year, and so at this time, I would predict that maintaining the current model that we have, we would use the same amount of physical space. So that does not consider expanding models, changing to full-day options or any of those pieces, using the model that we have, which is working. At this time, it looks like we will have the same needs in terms of classroom space.
Thanks.
On this slide, just again, that you can access after, this is just the component data, so this is the different components and the number of students that are in them that we had in terms of looking at the decisions that we could make, and the timeline we've already discussed. So when looking at the different options, again, what we're looking at is the Goodyear is the building in which that we, again, it's not necessarily the student, the student space, but they, there is the crowding in terms of the adult teacher space and staffing space, and so we're looking at ways that we can be alleviating the Goodyear. And then when you look at the map, ultimately, recognizing that the Goodyear, the components that move from it, only go either to G10, which would go to the Shamrock, or the remaining components would all, are all ones that will eventually go to the Reeves, which is why I highlighted the pond area earlier. Knowing that the Reeves components are not ones that can move right now, the only component that we could move right now would be G10. And so G10, if it were to move into the Shamrock, recognizing that at this point, when we're looking at our different components, that one singular component move kind of has a domino effect, that we would then be looking to move the RISE, the RISE 2 programs that are at the Shamrock to the Hurlwyman, and then moving H3 out of the Hurlwyman into the Malcolm White. And these are all components that would, at the end map, be moving. What this would do is it would move, make a one general education classroom reduction at the Goodyear, which would alleviate some of the pressure there, being able to move some of the special education teachers, ML teachers out, the adult spaces around. It would make a bubble room reduction at the Hurlwyman by having H3 move out, and it'll make it so that more of RISE 2 could move over to the, to the Hurlwyman from the Shamrock, and then it would also have us closer to the final map. And so when looking at the enrollment, this just shows you the breakdown that it would look like for the upcoming school year. The next option, is it easier, do you want me to stop and these, or go through all of them and then do questions?
Does anyone have any questions at this point, or would they like to wait to get more information?
Sure. All right. So if we do. So if we don't want to move full components and, and for student movement, that our next option would be what we've talked about, is to be expanding the use of buffer zones, similar to what we have between the Linskit and the AltaVesta. And so one of the reasons it's helpful to see what are the components that would be alleviating pressure is, those are components that you would most likely look at when considering the buffer zones between buildings. And so again, you could consider G10 as a buffer zone, the H3 component, as well as the other H numbered components that are near it. And then one of the components we've talked about previously has been the R2 component between the Reeves and the Hurd Wyman, which again, if we're expanding buffer zones, might be one that you would look at. As I mentioned, what we're really looking at in our decision is, is not a, let's decide which ones to make buffer zones, it's a matter of, do we want to move components? Do we want to expand buffer zones? And that we would then do through implementation, the determination of which ones. These are just merely examples, or not to anything at all. What I provided in your packets are examples of three different communities that Sanborn has worked with, that they provided to us as examples of communities that use buffer, buffer zones and what these look like. And as you can see through implementation phase, what that would look like is revisiting our policy and the determination of how that works. Primarily, you would be looking at, and you can see with Watertowns, is that they, what theirs is really focused on is kindergarten enrollment and new enrollment to Watertown. You also have Somerset, they're the one that kind of listed out the addresses and what that looks like. And then the last one is Arlington. Again, I think what it, what really this was to highlight is, is that it's a, it's a, something else that's used and that we would have resources we could go to if this was something that we wanted to consider, as well as we have other communities, some that are very local, that we could be using as a resource in the process of implementation. And so all current students living in these components would be grandfathered in, new enrollment could be enrolled in either school. One of the things that we did talk about is recognizing though, and I say this like as the disclaimer, because I always want to feel like I said all the things, is that this is a yearly process. So we are, we would be deciding grandfathering, or deciding buffer zones for next year and building it out. That does not mean that, that you don't come to a place a year from now or two years from now, where we're now talking about removing more components. And I say that just as in like a, we are making decisions one year at a time. And so, because that's one thing that I kind of struggle with, is that it's, that we're making these things one time. And so just kind of looking at, here are buffer zones now, this is what we're using now, and that we will revisit this every year and see, and see what it looks like moving forward. And then the last one is the easiest to talk about, this is making no adjustments this school year and evaluating for, in the next review cycle, whether we want to make some adjustments, gray zones, all of the above. So the pros and cons that were developed during our work with our advisory committee was that when looking at our continued phase, so if we were to move the components, we were to make, move G10 into the good, into the Shamrock, if we were to have our Rise Two classrooms move over to the Hurd Wyman, and, and H3 moved over to the Malcolm White, that we would balance our Rise Two population and reducing the number of students in our Rise One and Rise Two program inclusion, especially in our younger grades and our, in our first and second grade classrooms. More Rise Two students would be together at the Hurd Wyman, there would be one less bubble room at the Hurd Wyman, and there would be, by making this movement, when talking about further flexibility, when you have the Rise Two program move and G10 move and, move into the Shamrock, you actually have an open classroom, which would provide us a bubble room in the district for ECP or, or things of such. And then the cons is, of course, we'd be moving up to 55 students, we would be likely adding an additional bus to the Malcolm White. However, when we talk about transportation, I think that that, I think that that is one that in implementation, we would have to really validate. I think that's a potential con, we don't know that for sure. And then there would be no direct adjustment overall for the Reeves and the cons. And again, I think anytime we're moving students, I think the con is just, is just the outcome of a process. Gray zones, the pro is there's no movement. It takes, gives us a break from redistricting components and students, provides us with flexibility, there's less risk because it does not have any permanent moves for next year, and it provides a preview, which I, you know, I thought was a nice thought, was that it provides a preview of potential moves in the future. The cons are it's the unknown. One of the things we talked a lot about with expanding buffer zones, and I do think it's helpful for context to see that a lot of other districts have them, but it's new to Woburn. And so I think there is a lot of kind of like culture work that needs to be done. We talked about, about like communication, kind of really, how do we get, make sure that, you know, the community understands what this means. I think that what you're, what, you know, community members are used to is buying a house in Woburn and being like sure of where your school is. And, and a change of that is that when you buy now into these buffer spaces, that it provides unknown, and I think anytime there's an unknown, it's, it's different. Not something that we can't overcome, but just a recognition of the cons. And then after-school programming, so really talked about the need to ensure alignment, especially in schools that would have shared attendance zones. So for example, if G10 is a buffer zone, and I do not know that, I'm just using it as, as an example, but if G10 were to be a buffer zone, and that was a shared attendance zone between the Shamrock and the Goodyear, ensuring that the two buildings are aligned. One of the things we talked a lot about especially is the number of spots that are available, especially in some of our before-school programs, needing to keep open spots available in these, in these buildings, so that as families are, are finding out later, that we are not having that be a barrier for their enrollment. And then also the need that we, that we might need to go back and revisit, and that it, you know, it will, could work for next year, but we don't know necessarily what it would look like for the year after that. And then what we talked about is just, and again, the work that you see in the packet is by us moving into kind of something that's new and that we're expanding beyond our current space, is that we would just really need to spend time defining through implementation phase, what this looks like, so on and so forth. And in terms of no adjustments, this provides us a break from redistricting, it moves no students, however, it may not work. Our word I hear was, was that it's a gamble. All right. Before I move on to the conversation about middle school, it probably makes the most sense to pause and answer elementary questions.
Does anyone have any questions on elementary school? Yes, vice chair.
If we do this, the gray zones, and we're going to be changing neighborhoods, so new people come in and they may go to a different school than the neighbors, that's a definite no for me. I, I just do not want to pit one neighbor against another and kids that are making friends, going to different schools, and I think it would be a transportation nightmare. I think that you just would have to provide transportation if we're taking them out of their neighborhood school.
In the gray zone, in the buffer zones, you would have to provide transportation to any, to their buildings.
Yeah, so I could just see that being a nightmare, kids getting on buses they shouldn't be on. But I just think that that's, that that's a gamestopper for me right there. How many kids are in the Rise Two that would be going from the Hurd to the, from the Shamrock to the Hurd?
So it would move two classrooms?
Yeah. Is there two empty classrooms at the Hurd Wyman that can take those kids on?
Why you would be moving out a component?
It's a, yeah, it's a domino. So you'd have roughly seven to eight students in each classroom.
I think we had 13.
Yeah, it, it.
13 kids total?
I can look at the exact grade. You could have another student enter the program tomorrow, so I would say you're safe at seven to eight students per.
You're also, I think that you're more so to count on that is ensuring you have the room. You're never going to have the, the number of students. But you, right now, if you don't move, if we don't move any students out of the Hurd Wyman for next school year, we are prepared to be opening a room. What we would need in order to move enough, the two rooms over, is that you would be moving the component out to open up the, the additional space. Because the Hurd Wyman right now still has one bubble room. This would eliminate all the bubbles.
Okay. And then the transportation cost for those students would be the same or, because we're just going to a different location?
Yeah, I would not anticipate a significant change right now.
Okay. And then the reduction in staffing, that, would that be just?
It was a reallocation.
Okay, so we just go to a different building?
So one of the things that we talked, we talked about is, one of the things that supported, that helped with some of the spacing is, is that when you provide an equitable distribution of students across the district, it provides a more equitable distribution of staffing, right? And so it's not that you're needed less, less teachers, it's that it provides an allocation of staffing to different buildings, because again, a lot of what we talk about is like the number of adults in some of our buildings. And so again, it's a, it is a potential piece of it, but it's highly likely when you're moving that number of students out, that you could have some reallocation, which is what some, would reduce some of the adult space tightness.
Okay. And as far as the grandfathering, we talked about just grandfathering fifth graders. So if we change this, all current students living in there?
So if you were to, for example, if G10, and it's very, and it's very similar to, and I guess the best example is that in A4, if, if a kindergarten student was enrolling at, enrolled, going to enroll at the AltaVesta, and they had a fourth grade sibling, they were never a student in the buffer zone that you would consider enrolling then in the other attendance area of the Linskit, right? If they have a, it would be only, which is what we did, is that if there was kindergarten, kindergartners enrolling at the AltaVesta, and they had no siblings, and they were new to the school, then they were the students that would then be chosen to be enrolled at the Linskit, because they were new families to that community. And so when you do the buffer zones, you just pay attention to some of the grandfathering and that if you have, if a G10 were to become a buffer zone, I would not, in this process, you would not just start to move any students who live in that zone and start to redistrict them. It's only a consideration of if a new student, new family comes in, that when they enroll, we have the flexibility to enroll them in one of the two, two schools. And I think that what happens, is that when we're building something, it's going to feel different than once you have it built and maintain it. Because you could have a buffer zone that you don't use for, for a while. You could have a buffer zone, for example, G10, you could not enroll, you could enroll every student there at the Goodyear for, for a while. It is that you have the flexibility that if we need to, we have options in order to not end up where we were before, which is too crowded that we have really significant problems, right? And so I think that with that, like it's really, the, the buffer zone is, is really kind of like, is the culture shift that you're going to feel the most when you start them. And it, and kind of the grandfather piece is really about that if there's an existing family there, a new enrolled kindergarten or is not a student, we would, we would have enroll in the other building.
I just, I couldn't imagine a parent having kids in different.
No, no.
But I thought we're just doing the, because of the start, just the fifth graders would be, and any family members, but anybody that's.
We're talking about grandfathering in on gray zones. If we did, if you were to go with option one and you were to move components, that would, the grand, we would be having the same conversation last year, which is grandfathering in your rising fifth graders, but not.
Anybody else.
Not the others. It would be the same process as last year, which is why we established the request for, I, I never, I, I need a better word.
We call it out of district placement.
In district, out of district, but yes. You would go through the same process of applying to go to a different building. And then one, one of the things too, that, that if you were to do kind of the buffer zone, and we did see last year, is that some of our families who were newly enrolled, and they were currently Hurd Wyman families, but recognized that they were a zone that would potentially be going to the Malcolm White, requested to attend the Malcolm White for next school year. And I think that was when we talked about the pros, is that because people, you know, individuals and families can start to see that, they, some kind of opt, and that also can help with some of the balance.
To answer your question, in that first option, there would be, there are currently 14 Rise Two program students that would be moved. There's two open seats, so there is currently 14 students as of today.
Would there, just for, out of, for context, are those students, those students will eventually be moving?
Yes.
To the Hurd Wyman at some point?
Yes.
Anyway.
Yeah.
You'd be moving them sooner. But they're eventually going to go to the Hurd Wyman. Like they're going to make a transition.
Right, but the younger kids would become along with them, right?
So your rising first and second grade students would be moving now?
Right.
That's a finale. I just had a question for Dr. Ryan, if I may. Did we add any ECP classrooms last year?
So we had one classroom that we had, we had flipped it. The answer is yes. There was one classroom that came on board that had, I believe it had been intended to be a Rise kindergarten, and it ended up with the numbers that it ended up being a Rise pre-K.
So I guess if the numbers are trending in the same direction, would it, does that mean that we would be adding a new class or not?
No. I think right now, we, from, from what we have and from the data, I think we appear to be stable. We don't plan for a lot of extra space. But based on just sort of looking at the numbers coming in, we seem to be in alignment with where we were last year.
At this time, in November?
Yes. And, you know, I think the other flexibility that we have is, while it isn't optimal if we do end up with a few more students, unlike students that are K5, we have a little bit more wiggle room where we can stay within the regulations in terms of putting some more students in the classrooms, provided that we add more staffing to the classrooms. So it's a little bit tricky because you end up with, you know, more three-year-olds. But we would be compliant, we would just need to add a little bit of staffing. I mean, it's, you know, again, it's not optimal, but if we did end up with an unpredictable amount of students, we would start to space them over the different rooms with, with the staffing, is what we would do.
Okay, thank you.
I think it speaks to the fact that, that we know that like in any of these phased places, we, we're tight, right, in somewhere. It's just a, it's a matter of kind of the approach we want to take to kind of supporting those pressure points until we get to a final map.
Yeah, I think with the early childhood program, it, I mean, it's, it's always unknown. And, and so a piece of that is, you know, when, when we look at it, I, if I was incredibly concerned about it, I, I would tell you that. And from what I, what I see, I'm, I, you know, I feel fairly comfortable that we will be okay with maintaining based on the data that we have. And I also feel as if, you know, again, if we have a few more students come in, we'll figure out how to do it with the staffing in a manner that's, you know, safe and, and works for the students. We don't have the same, you know, contractual limits, the, the classroom sizes are dictated by the regulations. And as a practice, we, we stay under, slightly under what we can. And because we have so many classrooms, if we need to, you know, add students, we would disperse them as evenly as we could over the room, so that it really, you know, would minimize the impact, if that helps. What, what it is, what it doesn't allow us to do is change the models. That's, that's really the piece that, that we need to keep in mind. However, changing the models, as we've talked about before, it requires more than just physical space, it requires a, an allocation of staffing. So that's the part where, you know, it's, we would stay with the same model.
Right. I just, one more question. So we add learners, and then we have to add adults for the learners too. So it's, it's not just, like it's a different concept than just K through five, because it comes with staffing. Do we, would we have to get a DESI waiver or anything like that?
No, no. We may need to add a paraprofessional to a room if we end up with additional students, but we, we do have the, the bandwidth to do that.
And I think too to note that Mr. Commonants, you know, and Dr. Ryan talked about contingency plans, and then while they're not ideal, they are, you know, we would just be reallocating some, we'd be reallocating conference room within the teacher's room space and using another room. And I think it's a, we know, we, we know that we don't have, have the room, no matter what we're doing, we're kind of playing around, but there are.
Yeah, that, that's, that's actually a very good point. Another contingency plan is, it would be similar to what happens at the Goodyear, where the adults are put together more so than what is optimal, but it doesn't impact the students. So we would have to free up a space, and we would look at creatively sharing some office spaces with adults. And we have worked through that, and we do have things that we could do. Again, none of it is optimal, but it's things that we can do. And I, you know, and I think, until we have more, a, a new building or more space, that, you know, we, we need to work with what we have, and we can. And I think we can do it in a way that, you know, our, our staff are fantastic, they, they roll with it, and I think we can do it in a way where the kids are not, are not impacted and can access, you know, a great education.
Okay. Is there anything else in elementary school? Ms. Wetzel?
Hi. Ms. Young, we talked a little bit of this at the redistrict advisory committee, but the school placement and how gray zones might affect the timing of when teachers, is that, like, when you receive a teacher placement?
Yes. Yeah. So one of the things that happened, especially when we, this past year included, is that when you have buffer zones, what it does is it makes it so that the notification of teacher assignments would probably be closer to the start of the school year, as well as any of our approval, first families requesting a different building, because we're going to wait as kind of far into the summer as we can in terms of looking and seeing where our enrollment is, recognizing a lot of our enrollment happens mid to late August. On the positive on the model that we've been using for the past few years related to elementary is that in kindergarten, you don't get your teacher assignment until the following Monday, but you wouldn't, but that includes meaning that you wouldn't know your building assignment until closer to the start of the school year, which is what we used this past year as well. And again, I think when, when having the buffer zones, a piece of that is going to be, the notification of school assignment would be, would be a little bit later than we use previously.
It's just more part of like the culture shift and communication piece that we talk about?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then another thing I was thinking of as we were talking, the, it's noted as a con, the, under the gray zones, but I'm wondering if it's sort of maybe also a pro, the after school programming. I know it's something that families bring up a lot, how it differs at each of our schools with the gray zones and having to have all this communication around it. Do we think that could also help streamline the after school programming at our schools and make it a bit more similar?
I think that it would absolutely create better alignment to buildings that share attendance areas. I think that as you saw tonight, a lot of the after school portions are related to our buildings and the alternative funding sources that they can be provided. And so I think there are absolutely spaces in which we can, within our own community, kind of create better consistency. I think we can absolutely ensure that we create consistency among shared buildings. I think a total consistent, we can't necessarily guarantee because of some of the ways that we receive funding for some programming, but it will certainly create consistency, you know, interbuilding in, in better ways, because we would, we would have to. And I think we have gotten closer every year.
Agreed.
So.
Thank you. And the only other thing I was looking at, if you just look at, if we were to move components, one of the cons, and it just really sticks out to me, is how it doesn't really provide any relief for the Reeves when that's the, of the schools, seven schools, the Reeves and the Goodyear are the two we're looking at, and that plan doesn't do anything for that school. So I just think it's something, again, that stuck out to me as a kind of pretty big con. Just to note, if we're going to move people, not help one of the schools. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Anything else for elementary school?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Let's move up.
Okay.
Sixth grade.
So one of the things that we discussed, we discussed first with the building administration, was looking at the enrollment of our two middle schools. And then this was also brought as, to the redistricting advisory committee, so that they could be providing pros and cons that we provide today. Again, one of our options is still to not be doing, to be spending more time and space in this next year, but I want to make sure that you have all the information for all of our schools. So you have in front of you, you have the spreadsheet. We looked at this last time, so it should be familiar. But we recognize, and I'm going to go forward a little bit, that our enrollment between our two buildings is discrepant, and that when looking at our middle school projections, from now until our current kindergartners, you have about 36, 55, 17, 29, 27, 36 more students who are right now set to go to the Kennedy than the Joyce. And so over, when you kind of combine those over a three-year, you're looking around 90 to a little over 100 students at any given time. And so when looking at the class sizes of our, of our two buildings, I, again, I shared last time that I, that my eighth grade is a bit of, is the outlier crew at the Joyce. So I provided what it would look like for next year, the 26, 27 school year, and these would be the class sizes between the two buildings, remembering that our grade six is divided up over four teacher teams, and then seven and eight are five, which is why you see the change in number. So it's always going to be smaller class sizes in seventh and eighth grade than sixth grade for that reason. And so when looking at our building utilization, I think what, as our two middle school principals would say, they're using all the spaces in both of our buildings. But really, what I think is the consideration at our, of the middle schools is whether there wants to be any look of an adjustment related to our attendance zones between the two schools, or if we wanted to make no adjustments for this year and review that for the next school year. And so if the decision was to be made for gray zones in elementary, the consideration could also be made if you wanted to make that same consideration of buffer zones to the middle schools as well. And similar to the question that you asked before, Ms. Chisholm, is that we would not, it would not be redistricting, you're not going to move any current students, you're also not redistricting families. So if they have a current seventh grader, and it's, and a sibling is set to follow their sibling to the Kennedy, they would stay there, right? It would be for new families, as well as similar to what we said before, it would foreshadow kind of the movement, and so families in those zones may opt. And so when looking at the gray zones, I just wanted to share what would be the components that you would most likely be looking to move. And so it would either be, not move, I'm sorry, that would be a gray zone, a flexible attendance area for enrollment, would either be component each one, would go from the Kennedy to the Joyce. What this would do is your entire, basically your entire Hurlwyman would now all be going to the Joyce, so it wouldn't be the split building. You would have one outlier component in the final end map that's currently at the Linskit that once they were districted to the Hurlwyman, you might want to consider, but they're currently not at the Hurlwyman. Or looking at components M7, M8, M9, and M10, which those, the number of students in those components is the same as the number of students in each one. And so it's about a 30-student swing, and that those components would make it just be a further split at the Malcolm White, which already has students going to both buildings. And those students, again, would, that would be a consideration of attendance zone. You would not, you would probably not make them both gray. You would be looking at, if we decided to go this direction, that we would pick one of them to do that. Again, you'd be grandfathering current siblings. Additionally, the other option is that we make, that we don't make any considerations. I also think that what decision is made and vote is made on the elementary, I think would impact the decision that you were to decide in the middle schools. If you were going to do nothing next year in the elementary, it's probably unlikely that we'd then decide to start gray zones only middle school. I think that you want to kind of think about in that sense of what makes sense, how they would go together. And so again, in our pros and cons, our gray zones could provide more equitable classroom sizes, more equitable use of buildings, encourage school choice options. One of the things we talked about even now is we do get a good, a good number of students who are in our Kennedy zones that will, that request to go to the Joyce, and, you know, we try to green where we can by making the gray zones buffer zones. Some families might see that and just opt to make that move. The cons is, again, I think that it's, this is really a question of kind of culturally, if this is a, I think, something we want to take on, because it is an unknown to families, it's a change in how things work. It may not, again, I think as we know with gray zones, if we're not moving students, it may not work. We might need to revisit. Potential building project adds further unknowns. It's whether, you know, I think this was, this was prior to your, your vote of what decision was made in terms of the SLI, but one of the cons was, was related to not knowing what direction was being taken in terms of our next building project. That was a piece of consideration. That there could be complexities with siblings. We may not see the impact as quickly. This is really the, I think, one of the big ones, is that because you're not moving current students, it's not going to alleviate pressure immediately. It is a gradual pressure release. And then making no adjustments, we'd make no adjust, we would, it would be no disruption for families. I think too, it would, the no adjustments, meaning that knowing we're going through the process again next year, this would, you know, is an option to make, to take a look at it further, kind of any more information research that wants to be put into this. And the con is that we would want to be having classroom sizes that are disparate, and that it would not be aligning with our guiding principle of our equitable distribution.
One, one piece of information I would add, just for you to consider, is that the middle school principals did indicate that they're comfortable with the numbers because the Kennedy has had higher numbers in the past. So this isn't something that the principals express any level of discomfort with.
All righty. I can take middle school questions, but I just want to go through just so that, the scope of what we're doing. So this was the review of our options. Questions, kind of further things you want us to look into can be sent to, for Ms. Wetzel and I, for the Resource and Capital Planning Subcommittee, where we can kind of, again, it's been helpful to go through the different groups and be able to find that information. Also, that went out with the notification that went out on Monday, was a Google form, which we've been collecting questions. The two questions that have been submitted, both were going to be answered in tonight's presentation, but we'll still follow up. But I, I say too, that any questions, to please use the form on the redistricting website, and we'll continue to work those in. I will provide an informational caregiver night via Zoom, December 11th, just to review what is being voted on. Again, reminder, we're building a process, we're going through all the steps. December 17th, again, we'll be back here to decide what we're doing. And again, just the decision is whether we want to do a continued redistrict, a gray zone, or nothing at all, and that we will then have implementation time on what that looks like post your vote. So you don't need to, like, decide gray zone components. It's just a matter of if we're doing them or not.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Young. Does anyone have any questions on, I guess we'll start with middle school? Luckily, we only have two, so. Vice Chair Chisholm?
I just, as far as people from the Kennedy that would go to the Joyce or would take themselves out, is that publicly known? I mean, do we put that out, that if we, families want it? Because I, I don't know if a lot of people know that they could do that, we don't want to do that?
No, it's not, sorry, I'm, don't, I'm getting some water, I'm trying to answer a question.
Yeah.
No, what I'm saying is that, like, we already do have families within the district that are, that ask for this from year to year.
Right.
And so I, I say it is, sometimes we can't say yes.
Right.
I think that what happens, and what we saw at the elementary level was, was that once families saw that they were in a zone that might move, is that it gave us, that we saw like an uptick in those requests. And so I would anticipate at the middle school level, that if we were to do the same thing, that we would see that. So if we were to decide to make H1 a gray zone, even though we wouldn't be districting anyone who's currently enrolled in the Kennedy there, it might make some families decide now that, because we, we would be providing transportation, that they might decide, oh, now that I would have a bus, I would, I'll just go now. And so it could, you know, again, you can't predict. It might help alleviate the, the pressure point faster, because once someone knows that it's, it's kind of a mixed component, you can see that, that change. And one of the things I talked about with Mr. Nickerson over the summer, because we, you know, we really try not to approve the out of district zoning, just because it makes it really hard to predict in the future, that really it's kind of, you know, staff, students that we, that we approve, special education siblings that we approve, or any kind of extenuating circumstances. However, given the redistricting, Mr. Nickerson and I discussed that he said yes more than others, given the fact that his building had space and that that was a potential movement. So it just provides for, for more flexibility.
Yes, I just feel that the schools that have split, go into Kennedy-Joyce, there might be a situation where it would be easier, family, friends, whatever, if they decided to stick together and, and go.
Yeah.
You know, if that's...
Transportation, I think.
Yeah.
That's a big difference.
But, but if it was something that they worked out themselves, I mean, sometimes it's just a babysitting type thing, even though the sixth graders think they're all grown up. So it might be something that families, if that's a possibility, if we run to the point that that could be something we could approve more of.
I think that if it's not, if it's not, if we don't make it a buffer zone, then we're not going to provide transportation.
Right.
Right now, if you are in the Kennedy zone and have to go to the Joyce, you can, it is, we might say yes if we can, but you don't have transportation.
Correct.
If you were to have it, that H1 is a buffer zone, we now provide transportation to your, to your school. So that would be the difference.
Okay.
And why, if families may be more apt to just say, I'll go now.
Right.
Than if, because the transportation's provided.
And we just have to worry about that for expense?
There's a bus that goes, because of the components that you're looking at, just for reference, again, I don't, I, I'm, until you go through implementation, you're not going to know the full extent.
Yeah.
But all the components that you're looking at within this, like, a bus already goes pretty much there.
Okay.
Because the line is, is there, and it's the same with the little components, a bus is already going basically up to that line.
Okay.
So I say just as in, like, we're not moving components that are, that like, right now have blockers, and then you're out of your bus. There's already a bus that goes around this space.
Okay.
But again, I think that through implementation, you'd have more information.
Yeah, thank you. And Dr. Ryan alluded to it, we did speak to both the middle school principal and current high school principal, who was a long time, you know, Tom Quin, he was here for a long time. They are, we have a benefit of experience with both of them, 25 years at the Kennedy and almost 20 years here. They've talked about the ebbs and flows over the, over the years, and so, and they are comfortable with how it is currently operating. We, we've never projected out the way that we did. And so that's, that's a difference, and so.
And I would say that came actually from Mr. Quailey, was because I was, I was talking to him more, and we talked about the two-year, and he was actually the one that said, well, what does it look like if you go all the way back?
Right.
And I think that was what, what prompted us to go as far as we did, to see if it was like a two-year trend or, you know, a six-year trend.
Right. And, and again, historically, they often, when students request to go to either school, typically they say yes, because they have the capacity to.
To check the minute.
Right.
Is there anything else on this? Ms. Moore?
Thank you, ma'am. If I could, I just, just another question, we'll, we comment to, obviously, Ms. Young and her department, and anyone that worked on this presentation. I think the date today is the 19th of November, so I think we are way ahead of the game from where we were last year. Getting the information out, setting up these timelines, give a couple of different options to the citizens, to the students and their families, so that we're not sitting around here February vacation, figuring out where we're going to go come May and June. So I think, you know, on that half, it's great to see this tonight. Obviously, it's not coming up till the 17th for the vote. I just want to make sure that the redistricting group gets reassembled again, and they continue to follow the, the goals that we set forward for them, as well as the guiding principles that we ask them to follow as well. And I look forward to the follow-up from tonight's presentation as we move forward with this information. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Chisholm, would you mind taking the chair and then maybe calling upon me?
Sure.
If you...
Do I have to?
No.
So I just, thank you. So I just wanted to be fully transparent with how I'm looking at this. The, the idea that the Goodyear is, the adults are sharing spaces, but I'm seeing that designed instruction, whether it be MLL instruction, is happening in a classroom all at the same time, so I, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the piece where the physical therapist is looking for space on a daily basis in order to provide services. So I actually do see an impact directly to the students. As for the Reeves, I am, I, my tolerance for the Reeves is a little bit less than other buildings because of the situation that the Reeves is in, and sharing the space between the ECP and general ed. And so when I, because I think about the operational piece of the building, and the parking lot, and the dismissal, and the changing of the pickup-drop-off situation, is that the, the building, be it at capacity, is just different than how we, than how I look at other buildings. And so I'm just concerned about that, and because of the particular programs that are at the Reeves with the children that have maybe some vulnerabilities compared to other programs. So that's just the way that I'm looking at things. I do see a direct impact on the learning and instruction at the Goodyear, and also potentially at the Reeves as well, because I, I look at it a little bit differently. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of how I'm looking at this. And again, with, I agree with Ms. Chisholm, Vice Chair Chisholm, about the gray areas, but I haven't fully digested. but I haven't fully digested that yet. But right now, I'm leaning towards absolutely not doing nothing. So I'll be really open to hearing what you all have to say at the next meeting, but that's, that's where my, my mindset is. The middle school piece where I'm leaning towards is to correct the Hurlman split, but again, I'll be thinking more about that over time. So if anyone wants to correspond with me about their own experiences at the Goodyear, I also want to note that the Goodyear population, we didn't hear a lot from, and this is the school that's, that seems to be the most impacted. So I would please, please, please invite all the Goodyear families to reach out to us and see what they, they, as how they assess the situation and what their learning experiences at the, at the Goodyear and also the Reeves as well. So, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Crowley. That was, that was just beautiful. And it was a total surprise. All right.
How do you feel? Is there anything else on this topic? Is, does the committee have, are we in a good momentum for everything that it needs in order to vote? Is there anything else that me and the administration can provide the committee?
And we'll be going again, we'll go back to resource on December 9th. So if there's things, it's helpful for us to, to unpack there, answer questions, us to talk about that you feel like you want us to look into more and to bring the information back for the 17th that would help for the decision. That's the, the goal of having that December 19th meeting, sorry, December 9th meeting, is that we can work through anything that we can bring back for the vote.
Well, that's perfect. I forgot we had a meeting in between. Okay, great. So moving on to future agenda items.
I, I just have one. Through finance and personnel, we met on Monday, Monday it was. And we just, one of the topics that came up is the need for an assistant principal at the Alta Vesta School. So I just wanted to bridge to think about that, that we could probably possibly vote on that the next meeting so that if it's coming, needs to be an agenda item because it is financial too.
Sure. Okay. I'll be sure to put that on the agenda. Thank you, Vice Chair Chisholm. Any other future agenda items?
We've got a correspondence today.
It's on the agenda?
Sorry.
But you, you can report out on it if you want, Dr. Crowley. Go ahead.
Consideration of the, working on Good Friday.
Oh, okay.
The, an adjustment to the school calendar. So that, that request was made, so it's just a future agenda item.
Sure.
Yeah, so it would have to be a vote, would have to be.
Yeah, I think that given the, the current status of our collective bargaining agreements, we'll be moving to executive session to discuss that. But, so definitely, we could take that up and make sure we have exec on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Any other future agenda items? Do you want to have a 15-minute discussion about it? No? All right. We can just say happy Thanksgiving.
Motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Happy Thanksgiving.
The motion's adjourned.[1763.42]